Okay, we are now on the air. It's November 4th, 2013. This is the Cadillac City Council meeting. We have an agenda for tonight, 7:00 PM at City Hall, just after 200 North Lake Street. Everybody's in their spot. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And ask that we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you all for coming tonight to our meeting. Could we, Sandy, please have a roll call.
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Barnett?
Here. Thank you, Sandy. We do have approval of the agenda. Are there any added items or removed items? Anybody? Mr. Petya?
Not at this time.
Okay. With that, we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
And there's a support. Thank you both. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing nothing. Sandy, again, please.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. So we do have an agenda. Public comments are first. And public comments are open to the public, obviously. Apparently, my pen doesn't want to work tonight. With that, though, we do ask, the pencil's the same way.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We do ask that you keep it to three minutes, if you would, please. Public comment is open. Anyone wishing to come forward may do so at this time. Hello, and could you give us your name and address, please?
Cindy Knitz, 715 Cobb Street. I have a couple of concerns and questions to pose to council and city manager. This weekend, there was an ad taken out in the paper regarding the upcoming election, and on the ad was the city's logo. My first question is, is that a trademarked or registered logo? My second question is, if it is not, it is the property of the city of Cadillac. And I believe that there are ordinances, bylaws, and rules which forbid an employee from using city property for personal gain.
We are probably not going to answer your question right now, and possibly that can be touched on as we get through our meeting, and either board comment or through, go to the order, if you could stick around. But I thank you for coming tonight, Cindy, and posing that question.
My name is Reverend Christine Wiggins Barton from Precinct 2, 215 Bloget Street in Cadillac, and I'm a taxpayer and a voter in the city of Cadillac for the past 21 years. I'm a transplant from the Chicago area. I have a concern regarding the endorsement letter issued as a display advertisement placed in the Cadillac News by the president of the Cadillac's Police Command Officers Association, Officer Todd M. Golnick, which was published in this last weekend's edition and today's edition. The ad appeared in the weekend edition of both the logo and the motto of the city of Cadillac as an endorsement in support of Ms. Carla Filkins for mayor. I understand the advertisement was paid for by the Friends of Carla Filkins, Michael Ben Gulick treasurer. I've been told that no money exchanged hands, Mr. Petya. Of course, it hadn't. But something had to happen in order to satisfy the newspaper's fee for running the display ad. Display ads cost a lot of money. It did not appear magically. The letter was engendered by the officer who was on the city payroll to help keep the peace and security of its citizens, not to endorse a mayoral candidate. What exactly transpired between Officer Golnick, Ms. Filkins, and the Friends of Carla Filkins? That's one of my questions. What exactly transpired between Officer Golnick, Ms. Filkins, and the Friends of Carla Filkins? I and other taxpayers pay Officer Golnick salary and his emoluments, but he certainly did not represent me or the city appropriately in his actions, using my, or should I say "our," the citizens, that is, the citizens, logo, to accomplish his business of endorsement was an effrontery and offensive. The removal of the logo for today's edition, remember, yesterday, if you saw the ad, it was in the ad, but today, the logo was removed, is an admission that this letter was in part a mistake, a large mistake, especially as it seems that some of the officers may have been misrepresented by Officer Golnick and did not have an adequate chance to really debate the giving of this endorsement. So I would like to know how we handle these situations, what does council do about it? I would like to have some of those questions answered, and I thank you for your attention.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I'll refer to staff on that as we get to that point. Mr. Petya, if you could keep a note of that, so we could at least hear from the staff's side. Mr. McCready, nice to see you tonight.
Michael McCready, Matton, Michigan. Does that mean that the tattoo of Marcus has got on his backside, "City of Cadillac, Michigan," is against the law, too? I don't know. I mean, mountains and molehills, we'll see. Night before the election and all through the House, all the creatures are stirring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCready. Anybody else? Public comment is open. Any other city-related matters? Hearing and seeing no one else pop forward, we will close public comment, proceed to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda appear to be two items, the minutes from the work session from October 21st, also the city council minutes from our regular meeting on the 21st of October as well. Anything about those minutes? And actually, I have a question before we get any further. Marcus, resident from Cadillac, was here tonight and asked, they apparently went to our website, clicked on the support document 3A or the 3B, and in the event, it didn't pop up anything to show them what the support document was.
3A or 3B? Can you just give me?
Those are the minutes, 3A and 3B.
Yeah, they're basically, it looks like, under most of the things that we have on our agenda, there is a support document, not always.
Yeah.
And it looks like it's underlined to imply, if it's on the website, that it would be sort of like an icon to click on.
I don't know when they may have done that. I know that it's on there now. I'm actually using that site to access to next agenda.
Okay.
I apologize if it wasn't on there earlier.
All right. Thank you. So ordinarily, it would be, and it is now, and?
Yeah, it's possible that, that when they accessed the site, they actually see it, it was uploaded.
Okay.
Just a guess. But it's definitely there, because I'm on it right now.
Very good. Okay.
Hopefully, not a website glitch.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have, actually, minutes and minutes on here from work session and a regular meeting, both on October 21st. How would we like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Any discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none. Sandy, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Proclamation is none for tonight. Public hearings, we do have a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. It's a public hearing to adopt ordinance number 2013-32, amending Chapter 12, Article 4 of the City Code of Ordinances, this was relative to historic districts. And we actually have some folks in the House, the meeting, excuse me, the public hearing is open. And I'll refer and prefer first to the city manager, if you wouldn't mind giving us some background, or the appropriate staff.
No, thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, your last city council meeting, when we established tonight's public hearing date, Jerry Adams, our community development director, did give what I'll call a brief briefing on some of the changes that are being recommended by the Cadillac Historic District Commission. This evening, we have left copies of a slideshow at your desk, as well as, we have the slides available that I believe Jerry's going to run through, that provides a little more context to the recommended changes. And Nan Taylor, Chair of the Commission, is also here this evening, perhaps to address any questions, if any should come up. I would like Jerry to start with the presentation, if that's okay.
As Marcus mentioned, I put a copy of the PowerPoint at your desk. I know sometimes these are hard to see, but we'll go from there. As indicated, the public hearing tonight is for the purpose of possibly amending Chapter 12, Article 4, the Code of Ordinances, which governs historic districts. And the original historic district ordinance was originally adopted in 2005. Hard to believe, really, but it's getting old. And that particular ordinance, what it did was establish our historic district. It has been amended once. It was amended with the inclusion or the addition of the Cobb's and Mitchell Building Historic District. The ordinance at that time also provided for, and Historic District Commission provided for the administration of historic districts with the, you know, how do we handle our district, what happens, et cetera, provided for work applications for construction activity. Construction activity in the district does have to come before the Historic District Commission, provided, we only deal with exterior modifications to a building. We don't get involved, our commission doesn't get involved with interior modifications. And it doesn't cover maintenance items. For example, if you were to re-roof or paint, generally speaking, that's handled by staff. And then also, the ordinance at that time provided for ordinance violations, and the proposed changes will continue to provide for these elements. We do have a Historic District Commission. As mentioned, Nan Taylor, our Chair, is here tonight, along with Tom, her husband. And we have some really great commissioners, Dean DeCrager, Mark Snyder, Jill Brown, Gwen Dubravich, Erin King, and Ed Windover. They make up our Historic District Commission, just a great group of volunteers, very concerned about not only the history of this district, but the history of the community as a whole. Why are we here tonight? Why amend the ordinance? Essentially, one primary reason, and that is, the State Historic Preservation Office, commonly known as SHPO or SHPO, essentially, they, in recent years, have been providing a model ordinance to communities, a model historic district ordinance. And as noted by the second bullet, that ordinance has pretty well been common for communities throughout the state that have historic districts to, if they haven't already done so, they've adopted that ordinance, or they've amended their ordinance to be consistent with the model ordinance. And that's basically what we're here tonight to ask you to do. By the way, all the pictures you're going to see, there aren't that many of them, but they're all from our historic districts, all some great homes. I want to quickly go through what the amendments will do. Some of these, I can go very quickly. Essentially, all Section 1 will do is just indicate that the amendments that are being made tonight, if they're approved, are being done so for the health, safety, and welfare of city residents. Section 2 will expand the purpose of the ordinance. Basically, it adds a beginning paragraph, kind of like an introductory paragraph, indicating the purpose of why it is we're doing this. And then the, Section 3, that particular change, again, if this is approved, in the current ordinance, as well as in future ordinances, not only will we provide a map of the districts, but we'll also incorporate their legal descriptions as part of the, as part of the ordinance. Section 4 and 5, I'll take those together. These particular sections don't necessarily have to go in the ordinance, because they're already provided for by the State Construction Code Act, but nonetheless, it kind of reinforces their need and benefit. What Section 4 and 5 calls for, under the State Construction Code Act, for example, if you were to build a new home, you have to provide smoke detectors, okay? And if you were to do some major remodeling of a home, under the building code, which in our case is enforced by the county, again, you would have to provide either fire or smoke detectors per the code. And basically, what this is saying is that you have to follow those rules and regulations. Now, there, well, let me go to the next one. In our case, and, you know, some folks might be concerned, you mean if we pass this ordinance, we're going to have to all of a sudden put in fire or smoke detectors? No. Okay? And I want to go to the second bullet. Probably 99% of what we do with respect to our particular ordinance would be excluded from this provision. And let me read that. Work involving exterior surfaces, such as the replacement of doors or windows, which we do get involved with as a commission, addition of doors or windows, addition of a porch or a deck, a replacement of roofing or siding, an installation, alteration, or repair of plumbing or mechanical systems. We don't get involved in those last ones, but we do get involved with the exterior kind of improvements, and generally speaking, the vast majority of those don't require someone to bring their home up to code with respect to smoke detectors. I'm not saying they shouldn't, but they don't have to. Section 6 essentially removes a conflict. Right now, the way the ordinance is structured, it has language that says, when you're dealing with both the historic district ordinance, the city building code, and the zoning codes, the most restrictive shall apply. We're just kind of taking that language out, because it does, by fact, if you were to read the zoning ordinance or the city building code, it already says that. And we're just removing it. Section 7 is a provision that deals with the fact that if you do violate the ordinance, you are subject to a municipal civil infraction, and it establishes a fine. The fine is not to be more than $5,000. Now, again, in the years that we've had the historic district, we've never issued a ticket, we've never had a fine, okay? And this particular $5,000, that's a maximum. It's commonly used throughout the state. Even if somebody were to violate the ordinance, doesn't mean they're going to pay a $5,000 fine. Our goal historically has been to work with the property owner to get the issue resolved. And again, we haven't had any issues since this ordinance has been in effect. Almost done here. Section 8 essentially establishes a procedure for adding additional historic districts to this ordinance. It just modifies what we have now, and goes on to explain, if we were to enlarge a district, how you do that, or if we were to eliminate a district, how you would do that. Section 9 of the proposed ordinance amendments essentially makes the establishment of fees, administrative fees for issuing permits and so forth discretionary rather than mandatory, because, as you know, the city already has another ordinance dealing with fees, so if you want to attach a fee, you can do it there. Right now, it says it's mandatory, so it really takes away your authority to do what you want to do. Section 10 adds, again, a section which basically says that if we were to establish a new historic district, that there is a procedure, a process for appointing a Historic District Study Committee before you would actually establish the district. You did that with the Cobb's and Mitchell Building, not necessarily because the ordinance said so, but the original act did. But this just, again, clarifies it. And then lastly, all Section 11 does is just indicate that if you adopt this ordinance, it'll take effect 20 days after adoption. So not really a lot of changes. That's the, kind of hard to see, I know, that is the Courthouse Hill Historic District location. And again, those are four homes that are located in the Historic District, an area of beautiful homes. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, Nan Taylor, she's the Chair of our commission, she's here tonight, too, in case you have any questions of her.
Okay, Jerry, thank you very much. Well done. The public hearing is open. I will ask Nan if she has to, wants to add anything else at this point? If you do, could you please come up and just say who you are, and we can figure out where you live, from the district, I think.
Nan Taylor, Chairperson of the Historic District Commission. I just want to add that the reason that the Historic District Commission voted to do this, to move ahead with adopting the model ordinance, is because we thought it was in the best interest of the city of Cadillac, not only for the historic districts that we have today, but for future ones, because you only have one ordinance, and it applies to all historic districts. So we have Courthouse Hill, we have Cobb's Mitchell, who knows, we might have some more someday. So we thought this was a good time to go ahead and replicate the language that the SHPO has recommended, that all local historic districts adopt. There are 75 communities in the state of Michigan that have local historic districts, so we're one of 75. And the newer ones, I know in the last four to five years, have been adopting the model ordinance. Many of the older ones are slowly changing over, which is what we're proposing. So I just wanted to add that as a little bit of background information. And that's all I really have to say, but we were obviously in support of this and recommended it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, as well.
Sure.
You may, you may have other questions, either from us or the public, so have a seat and stick around, please. And thanks for coming, again. Anyone, this is an open public hearing, and at this point, I'd ask anyone from the public if they'd like to come forward and discuss the proposed amendments, proposed amendments, sorry. Hearing and seeing no one move forward, I guess we're good. Jerry?
I should have mentioned, as a courtesy, we did send out notices of the hearing along with the proposed changes to all historic district property owners and residents, so they were advised of what we're doing.
Okay. Any feedback either way on that?
Two people made some inquiries, but just general, general inquiries, nothing against.
Okay. Thank you very much. I guess at this point, then, unless anyone else comes forward, no one is, I will close the public hearing, and turn this over to council. What is your pleasure, council? How would you like to proceed?
I did want to just make a couple of comments. I was on that study committee, and I know Jerry, actually, Mr. Adams, that's, he was involved with that before he was even here, which hopefully, that might have been one of the reasons that helped get you to Cadillac. But, and I think, Nan, you were involved in a lot of, at that time, with the research and the grants and such. Who'd have thought, though, that at the time, that it's done such a great job? I mean, I think there's been some improvements in that district that may not have happened. And the fact that nobody's here tonight shows, I've never had a complaint, I don't think any council has, from anybody in the historic district about the district. The only complaint I've ever got is they wanted to be in it, but they didn't touch. And so that's showing that it's working. And this is, it's nice, it looks like you're going up to code, but it doesn't look like any way where it's really restricting. I remember at the time, that was one of the items that we had, was where you start looking inside the home and different things, and this looks like it's more of cleaning up the ordinance and doing things with smoke alarms, but it's in no way making it more restrictive in terms of what's allowed, what's not, by projects, or like I said, in the interior. Does that sound accurate?
Correct.
So I, I mean, thanks to the committee, too, because this is one of those things, I remember, that was very, at the time, was questionable, and it's just worked out perfect. And I really think, it's been interesting, even from the, being on the board review with tax levels and tax, where the rest of the community's levels have gone down over the years, it's ironic that the historic districts, the levels of the homes' assessed values have not decreased at the same level. So that's, I think, something that we can be proud of with it, so thank you.
Anything else from council, or any motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2013-32, amending Chapter 12, Article 4 of the City Code for Historic Districts. Support.
There's a motion, and a support. Any discussion from council? Anything extra from staff? Any extra remarks?
If I may?
Sure.
Sandra, if you could just double-check the ordinance number before it goes and gets signed, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Are we all set?
Yeah, it's different on one thing than the other. Is it 12, or?
It's 12.
What number is that?
12.
2013-13.
I'll amend the motion to reflect that.
Okay. And the supporters, well?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments, corrections, or compliments? Hearing none?
Always a compliment to our commissions.
Yes. Thank you very much for your work.
All those volunteers.
I recall the first meetings that were public, and there was one at the auditorium. That was a long time ago. He's set up the tables up front, that is how long this has been going, so, thanks. It's very beautiful.
Whenever visitors come to town to visit me, one of the things that they like to do is drive around through the historic district and look at the wonderful homes there, so, excellent, nice job.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Anyone else want to jump in? Hearing, nothing else. Sandy, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Looks like no communications tonight, no appointments, and we will shoot down to the city manager's report. That would be you, Mr. Petya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
Let me back up. Did I miss anything? I did. We're going to go down to the ordinances and resolutions. You have nothing?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. I did want you, Marcus, I'll give you a little heads-up. For good of the order, the Mitchell fire, I've had some discussions about that. If you can start thinking about, maybe an update for the community. So we will skip over the city manager's report, also the introduction of ordinances and resolutions, and jump down to the resolution that is being proposed tonight for CCI.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we are looking for the city council to set a public hearing for your next meeting, which will be on Monday, November 18th, for the purposes of considering an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for Cadillac Castings Inc. in the amount of $1,353,244. In accordance with their application, this is for additional equipment required for increased sales volumes, replacement of their cooling system, and of their air system, essentially, they're trying to modernize it. It'll assist in the retention of 25 current positions and the creation of nine new positions. Again, this evening, we're looking just for the motion to set the public hearing.
Okay, could we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2013-3031, which includes setting a public hearing for November 18th to review a request from Cadillac Castings Incorporated for an industrial facilities tax exemption in the amount of $1,353,244.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there support as well? There is support. Any discussion relative to another IFT, which is quite remarkable, if you start looking at the numbers?
It's, I don't know how many times I've been saying about this being a record-breaking year, and this even has come to more light lately. We were at $12 million almost since March, and I went recently and reviewed that. And here again is another 1.3 million I've never seen the entire time since 2000. I've been on council, anything close to this. And when you look at the jobs it's creating, as well as not just retaining the jobs, but here again, this is amazing, that people are making a decision to invest in our community. They constantly are doing this, and I think it's notable of us as a community that this is happening, and it's exciting because the job creation, but these things, they're going to stay in Cadillac, they're not, this is a commitment they're making, and it's a great sign.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? I'd like to congratulate Cadillac Castings for their continued growth, and we look forward to having this hearing on November 18th.
Always good to see when they have new jobs added. I love to see that. And this is, this is a really good example of that, and it's due to them being competitive with a contract they received. So, I can't remember now what that contract was, it was in a communication that we had, I think it was from Ford? Is that correct? Does anyone remember reading that?
The contract?
Yeah, that allowed them to... Yeah, that allowed them to really beef up their production and to have this pay, help pay for itself.
Well, I know, I just saw, you know, Marcus let us know, too, not only this, we're looking at next meeting, having another one that's $4 million. This is going to be an amazing November. And again, it's just very impressive. We're lucky they have this. And they've had a lot of struggles, too, with energy costs, I know. But when you also look at it, at one point, I know they were 20% of our water users in the whole city. If you didn't have them here, that would be very drastic to us.
I'd like to agree with Councilperson Stolman on the new jobs, but I think we also have to keep in perspective the retention of the jobs. We were down in 2009, down to 1,500, and now we're close to 42. And if you're ever in business, new customers are very, very important, or new employees, but you have to maintain your numbers to begin with. And that's very, very important, especially considering our industries are in a lean mode, and they should be. And that's very, very important. I'm very, very pleased.
Yep. Looks like it'll be 17 million within about eight months if this all goes through, which is, I'm sure, I was on Before Art for four years, and I look back at some of those, and they were nothing like this. So, they're reinvesting and re-gearing, and they're going to be here for a long time. So, congratulations to our community and the workers and the job providers.
Yeah, it says up at the top of that list of equipment. That's where I read it. Additional equipment needed to manage the additional capacity required for the increased sales relating to the P415 program, and then the parentheses Ford.
Okay, that is fine print. You could be an attorney. We still have a motion and support unless anyone wants to do another one. And thinking not, Sandy, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next, it looks like we've got some stormwater and wastewater grant agreement. What's this about, Mr. Petcha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you all may recall, not too long ago, the city council authorized an agreement with Pryon and Newhoff to be the city's grant consultant for the state of Michigan's Stormwater Asset Management and Wastewater Grant, which has been commonly referred to as the SAW Grant. This truly is an incredible opportunity for the city, and what we need the council to consider approving this evening that will actually allow us to apply for the grant is a resolution by the city council, essentially authorizing the grant application and the grant agreement. Connie Houck from Pryon and Newhoff is here this evening to give a brief rundown of the grant itself and the process, and answer any more detailed questions in the air.
Hi, Connie.
Hi, thank you. I want to thank you guys for selecting Pryon and Newhoff to prepare your grant application for the SAW grant. We, and just to remind everybody, this is to develop an asset management plan for wastewater in your stormwater systems. So, that plan looks at your current infrastructure system, current condition, what the long-term ownership costs are, and it helps develop the funding needed to, for your long-term needs. We've been working with the city staff to develop detailed worksheets and ensure that we're requesting the correct amount in the grant for the city. And in the next two weeks, we're going to finalize the grant numbers and that application, and then that grant gets submitted on December 2nd. So, it is required as part of the grant application to have an approved resolution, and we, that's what we are asking for tonight, is to have that resolution approved and approve that the mayor can sign the application for submittal for December 2nd.
The motion, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, will be to essentially approve the stormwater and wastewater grant agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the corresponding grant application once it's been finalized by Pryon and Newhoff.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. If you can stay right there in case anyone has questions. Anyone have questions for Ms. Houck tonight?
I don't know if this will be a question for whom, but in the resolution, one of the sections under whereas talks about selecting more, one or more of the following. Are we selecting, is that all of those part of this, our application?
Excuse me, councilmember Stevens, what page are you on?
I am on page 10, where it has the, it's the first page of the resolution, but at the bottom, it has the number 10.
Okay.
And I, this may be something that you've already detailed last time.
Yeah, the whereas clause, it states whereas the municipality does hereby determine it necessary to, and then it says select one or more. Establish an asset management plan with a checkbox. Establish a stormwater management plan with a checkbox. Establish a plan for wastewater slash stormwater checkbox. Establish a design wastewater slash stormwater. Pursue innovative technology or initiate construction activities. And I believe we are going to be checking all those boxes.
Correct.
I didn't know if that would have to be included, you know, with the resolution that we're doing all of those. Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else, any questions prior to a formal motion? I think we're good. Connie, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Do you have any relatives in the school system right now by chance?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Well, my kids.
You announced my son, is that what you're?
I'm sorry. I thought you meant like adults.
Okay.
Yes, Nate is my son. Number 28, yes.
There you go. Guys look familiar from.
Don't tell your kids you said that.
No, I don't have anybody at the school.
Very nice job for the team.
Thank you. They are having a fabulous year.
Yes, they are.
I'll make a motion to approve the stormwater and wastewater grant agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the corresponding application once finalized.
Support? Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none? Sandy, could you help us out with the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, you're welcome. Good to see you again. Good luck on Friday night.
Thank you.
Sounds like we're at home, and hopefully, the field will be dried out by then. Your sun runs better when the field's dry, I noticed. In fact, they all do. Good luck. Okay, no reports of boards and commissions, the minutes of boards and commissions? Anything in those, Marcus, that is noteworthy for the council or public?
Items that are in both of those minutes, we've actually talked about here before with respect to plant commission items, as well as the, there was an update on the pigeon control discussion, I believe, at one of your last meetings as well. So, there's no new updates.
Public comments, we're back full circle to public comments. Anyone wishing to make a public comment at this point? It is requested that comment time be limited to three minutes. And it looks like Dee's here tonight. How you doing, Dee?
Fine, thank you. My name's Dee Robinson. I live in Marion, Michigan. I'm here for the animals, like have, that's what's brought me to your wonderful city, even though I've lived and played here for quite a few years. I do not live here. I wish I did. I'd love to be involved in the elections. Good luck, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted you to know that we're still very concerned about the animals in the shelter, even though that the things are continually looking up. I have a great concern that if the election doesn't go in the proper direction, that the shelter will suffer due to Ms. Filkins having, being a dog breeder, for one, this is one of the biggest no-no's of the animal kingdom, you know, when it comes to putting down animals and then bringing some in that doesn't really, is needed, you know? And it's all for vain, been vanity. I don't discount all breeders, because we do have several breeders that breed dogs for animal, for police activities, drug searches, bombs, what have you. I'm a big German Shepherd fan for that reason. I have four of them. I live on a cattle farm and have literally took the, being on the farm seriously with four, or six dogs and four cats and about 30 head of cattle. So, I am a very big avid animal lover and hope that we can continue to make changes in the shelter and that these changes will stay and not simply get shoved under the rug again. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Anyone else, public comment? Mr. Fawcett, how are you tonight?
Very good. Stan Fawcett, 10,200 East 34 Road, Cadillac, Michigan. I want to congratulate you, Mayor Burnett, under your leadership. Most areas have lost jobs in Michigan and been a complete disaster, but we have showed remarkable growth and retention over the last four years. Retaining old jobs is so important, as I think Ms. Bowman said, but even more important is gaining new ones. And if I remember right, you voted positive for anything that's came before this board, as I think the whole board has, for anything regarding helping business and industry. And I want to thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. It's a group effort up here. Thanks so much. Public comment still open? Anyone else? Have a nice crowd here tonight. Thanks for coming in. This is the part, I think, where I select a couple of folks from the back corner. If you don't mind coming forward, we do have a couple of students in the fine tradition of our former mayor, the late Mayor Ronald Blanchard. We have two students with us tonight, and I think they're going to introduce themselves, tell us who their teacher is, why they're here tonight, and maybe, maybe something they either learned or liked about the meeting or whatever.
I'm Allison Montal, and we're both from Ms. Van Heismann's government class.
My name is Anna Y. Seo, and I'm a classmate with Allison at NMC.
Closer to the mic, Connie.
My name is Anna Y. Seo, and we're from NMC, and our teacher is Mr. Van Heismann for government class.
Yep.
Okay.
We have to come to these to get more involved in our government, and I actually enjoyed it. I thought it'd be a lot different than this.
Well, thank you. Any comments on the other side? Just happy to be here, aren't you?
You're lucky you got one of the short ones.
Yes, you are. We've been here, we've been known to be here till midnight.
Anything else you'd like us to know?
Just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You, too.
Good to see you here in Cadillac. Thank you for coming. I warned them, although they were prepared. Any other public comment? Okay, it is going to be skipped down then to the tabled items, of which we have none good of the order. Would it be possible, Marcus, to give a short update on the Mitchell fire and where that is?
Sure, sure. I've got some notes on a few of the items that came up tonight.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and kick us off then?
Yeah, no problem. Mitchell fire, I believe we had approximately 45 people from, I want to say, three, three or four different fire departments that responded. This was a fire, for those that don't know, and I'm not sure if there's anybody that doesn't know at this point, the former Mitchell Corps, Mitchell Bentley Building off of Wright Street in Cadillac, caught on fire at about 10:30 at night this past Sunday. I believe firefighters were there until about 3 o'clock in the afternoon on Monday. It was quite an ordeal. In fact, until rather recently, I believe it was still smoldering, they used just under 650,000 gallons of water that our utilities department has estimated to put the primary blaze out. The investigation is underway. At this point, there still is no cause. We don't know what created it. We don't know if it was intentional or not, or what it was at all. So, I know it's awfully vague, but unfortunately, we don't, we don't know. I do know that we are working with different agencies as well to help explore what caused the fire itself, and we have been in touch with the property owner, so. With respect to cleanup, that is something that's going to be quite an issue, because at this point, I do not know whether or not there's any insurance available through the LLC that own the property. I do know that there might be, and I'm using the word might somewhat strongly, a possibility through the state or even the federal government to help with the cleanup effort. However, if we are going to take it that route, there are some pretty significant hooks, such as keeping a property vacant. You cannot even put a park bench on it for a five-year period of time. So, I'm not necessarily sure if that's the bridge we're going to have to cross, but there's some options that are out there.
Wasn't it owned by the county just prior to someone, or some entity buying it?
The county, the county sold it to an LLC, I believe about a year ago. Jerry, do you recall?
Yes.
About a year or so ago.
Wasn't that when they wanted to give it to us?
That was a tick, so.
Yes.
And the owner, there was some activity going on, their doors were open. You recall what that was?
My understanding is they were salvaging valuable pieces of wood, metal, and other things from the building.
It was a pretty cheap sale of the property itself, too, wasn't it like $10?
I believe it was in that order of magnitude.
Do we know anything about, like, any kind of toxicity in the plant that is, that was released? Or I had some people ask that it was an old building, was there asbestos flying through the air, you know, that folks have asked all this kind of stuff, and I said, beats me.
Yeah, I don't know. I believe it was an open, you know, an open floor plan and an open, you know, an open building. I don't believe there were any false ceilings that were in it, but I do not know if that was the case or not. It was described to me that, you know, that the building was obviously constructed of a brick exterior with solid wood floors and large wood timbers that were holding up the roof as well, you know, these big beams that were holding up the roof. And then it was essentially like a big tinderbox. I never, never was told about any other materials that were in there. I mean, I'm sure there may have been other materials in there. I know that there was metal that was in there, you know, from old piping and so forth, but I don't know.
Hot enough to melt bricks?
Hot enough to bend the metal. I'm not sure if it actually melted the bricks. There's an awful lot of them still out there, but it definitely melted metal. You could, if you go out and you drive by the facility, you can see the large beams that used to sort of hold the superstructure up. They've got to bend into them now. I mean, it was, it was super hot. I was on site and took a photograph of an old abandoned hydrant that used to be there, you know, years ago, and it melted the, it melted the finishing right off the, right off the front of it. So, it was pretty intense.
A brick oven.
Yeah, a brick oven.
Thank you. I've had a lot of questions on that, and I appreciate you clearing up most of them.
Like I said, it's still under investigation, and so there's really not much more that I'm able to share at this time. But as information is public and can be released, we'll certainly keep council on the loop, so.
Has it stopped smoldering now?
I believe it has. I only say that from my own personal observation. You were able to see, you know, the smoke and the steam coming out of it, and I drove by there over the weekend, and I didn't, I didn't see anything coming out of it at that point. So, it looks, it looks like it's, it looks like it's finally, it's finally dead. I wanted to address the comments that were brought forward earlier this evening regarding the use of the city logo. It was something that I come across the weekend, this weekend, in the newspaper. The reference is to a Cadillac Command, and I'm going to butcher the name, I'm sorry, Cadillac Command Police Officers Association of Michigan, which is the local command police union, letter of support. union, a letter of support that was in the newspaper for a political candidate. And on the letter, which was signed by the current union president, it had the city's logo, the...
It's right there on the screen.
Yeah, right there on the screen. I was going to point to this.
Yeah.
On the, on the bottom left. I was unaware, completely unaware, of the police command union coming out and endorsing a candidate. It's something that they can do. It's not something that they have to get any kind of approval from. Certainly, it was not authorized that they use the city's logo in any type of political manner, in any shape or form. Today, I have, in writing, advised all of, I have, there's four unions, all of the unions, that if they're using the logo, that they need to immediately stop, subject to getting my approval to using it for any future use. And that's, that's, at this point, all that I know. I know there's been, there's been a conversation about whether or not the union itself actually voted or agreed. However they do that to support the, the letter going out, I don't know, as they sit here right now, if that ever took place or not. Additionally, there was also the, the POAM, which is the Police Officers Association of Michigan logo, which is another union. It was their logo of the, the actual agency itself on there as well. I have no idea if that union condoned its use or not. And again, I'm hearing basically that perhaps that wasn't the case. So, I was able to, to the best I could, control, as soon as I found out about it, the application of the city's logo and had it removed. And that's where I'm at this evening with it.
How many members are in that union, the command?
I believe there's six, and then the balance are in the, the balance are in the other union, so. The...
Is that the property of the city, then?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I do, I don't know the origin of the logo. I don't know if we created it, if we bought it. I'm not sure when it came into existence. I do not believe it's trademarked or copyrighted, but notwithstanding that, it's certainly my presumption that it's the city's property. I mean, it's, it's our, it's our logo. It's what we use in all of our letterhead. It's not, it's not a seal. It's not, you know, the, if you will, the official seal of the city, which I don't believe actually has a graphic that goes along with it. But when we have documents that require the seal of the city clerk, you know, there's an actual stamp that we have, that we use, and the stamp does come up with, you know, with the Cadillac and the swoosh. It's clearly a logo. But unless someone tells me any different, I would assume that it's the city's logo. It's not, and it's for city business, so.
Satisfied.
Well, hang on. Maybe, is there a rule or ordinance or a policy, ethics policy, anything that prevents use of that? How did it get out to, would be the other question? How would our stationery be released to anyone? And who's responsible would be the two or three questions I have.
Well, the, the first thing is, one, it's not, it's not city stationery. Our letterhead is completely different than what was used. That was a union letterhead or union stationery, whatever term you want to use it. They created it. The logo is accessible to anybody in the world. You could go on our website right now and literally copy it and put it anywhere. So, it's, it's out there, it's accessible. It's not, you know, it's not a, it, it, I don't know how else to say, but it's, it's not somehow locked down or unattainable. You know, you can basically grab any logo you want from anywhere and, and use it however you want to use it.
And they do. That's how they do phishing scams on the internet, you know? Makes it look like a bank. It really isn't.
I don't, again, right now, tonight, I'm not aware of, of specific ordinance that we have on the books. Doesn't mean that there is one. I just don't know right now, so.
But you, I mean, if it's, you're considering it property of the city?
I, well, I, I am.
Okay. No, I was clarifying, because I think there's definitely a section in the ethics ordinance that we adopted, as well as probably in the manuals of the employees, about using property of the city. And I, I think that's one of my concerns, is there absolutely needs to be some sort of follow-up on this. Or this is going to turn into a free-for-all. That becomes the, the trick every time, is when it's too late for anything to get changed, someone just throws it out, and if there's no consequences for it, it's just going to promote more actions. You know, we could have had the other three unions come out, their presidents, and singly endorse without a vote, like this happened. And I know we can't control a union, and I even, I understand we can't sit there and say, you know, it's got to be from within, but to have a, to not have a union meeting and not have a vote, and then have someone just independently do it, hopefully the union will take care of it itself. But if we don't watch what happens, this will turn into, every year, let's wait till the very end where no one can correct it. I'm going to do this independently, and if there's no consequences for their actions, it's just going to continue to happen. And it'll be a new strategy every year. And I think this needs to be reviewed by the ethics ordinance and the policies, and really look at this, because it's a, it's a bad message, and it's got to be consistent. It can't be that certain staff have that card to do it, and everybody else, absolutely not. But I would think, I don't remember the sections, I kind of reviewed the ethics ordinance. There's also some that go to public acts of the state with the political activities, as well as Campaign Finance Act, as well as the employee policies. And there's, I think, very strict parts about using city property, which would include, in some cases, computers, phones, all those things. This being a logo, if that's the city property, would be included. Sorry, hopefully I didn't speak out of turn. Okay. Anything else to, I guess I just wonder, what is the unauthorized use? What's the ramifications for that?
In, in what manner?
Well, anyone, anybody in general using our logo with...
You don't appropriate something that belongs to the people of the city.
Hold on. Okay, hold on, Christine.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm going to ask again. What is the, the remedy for unauthorized use of our logo?
The, I mean, the, just off my cuff, the quick fix is I, frankly, I pull everything off of the web. I mean, we just pull it all down. I mean, because I can't control who's going to go on the city's website and grab, you know, the city's logo. There isn't, I, I'm unaware right now of a way of locking it all down completely. I'm sure there is, there's possibly a way of doing it. I'm not going to say that there isn't. But right now, it's open to the world. Anybody can go online and, and grab our logo. As far as a remedy for the use of our, of our logo on union documentation, I sent out today an order that it stops immediately. So, that's in place right now.
I assume our unions are not part of the city, though, are they?
Well, I, I'm talking about the local, our local, the local unions that are comprised of our local staff. I sent out a letter today to those presidents of the local unions, saying, stop immediately the use of this logo unless you're first getting approval from me.
Can, I just was curious, these unions aren't city-related, they're independent, aren't they? And not part of the city?
Yes, but the local, the local union members are city staff members.
Correct.
I'm not sure, but I'm sorry.
Do you have control over those city employees? I suppose I do.
Okay. We're not going to have a discussion, but we understand you have questions. I'm going to try to get them out. And the answer is yes, we do have control. Just what is the ramification for an employee using our logo? Has that come up before? And if so...
It's never come up.
I think that's what I was getting at about we, we need to get this really reviewed, because this is that normal trick. And it's unfortunate we have to have this discussion, but we're not the ones that did it. But it's the normal trick, let's wait till the very end so it can't be corrected, so a false image can be out there. And I, and I, like I said, I, I know we can't, I would hope that the local union takes care of its manner internally, that, you know, I even tell, you know, it's just, they need to be voting on this as membership. We can't control them to do that, but it's a bad practice to have one person independently within their union do this. But I do agree, I think, with what you're saying, is I appreciate, you know, Mr. Petcha getting right on that and stopping, and that was great. And stopping it for the future, but in the event it happens, I think that's where you're asking, is what's going to be, maybe we need to really emphasize this to the staff about the ethics ordinance, about the policies of the city in any public acts, so that if they do it in the future against, especially against what you've asked them not to do, that they realize there will be consequences for it. As I said, otherwise, it's going to be, it's just going to go, everybody can do it. And not even union, but a non-union could do the same thing.
Councilmember Stevens, thank, thank you for clarifying, and, and, Mr. Mayor, sorry if I wasn't quite glomming into what you were suggesting. And, you know, to that end, you know, absolutely, I'm going to look at, look at this, and this is not, I have no precedence from this. There's nothing that I go look back to and go on a checklist and say, okay, use of city logo equals X. It doesn't exist.
Just in general, what's our rule in general, not in this particular case or with this individual?
I don't have any case. I mean, it's...
The only thing I could say is, if you use, if you did this on the private sector, you would be ushered to the door. As, as a association, I was with the Teachers Association at the Intermediate School District, and I could wholeheartedly tell you right now, if I wasn't ushered to the door, I would have been severely written up for using their logo without permission. I can say that categorically. That's property, you can't use it. I don't see that as, looking at the staff as a whole, I don't see where any other staff member would ever take that liberty, except in this case. So, that's what I have to say.
Let me jump over. I'll get to you in a second. We're going to just jump to Councilmember Bowman. Marcus, are you done with the good of the order? Or do you have any?
I had a couple more...
Please go ahead.
Quick, if that's okay. One, I wanted to, again, congratulate the Cadillac Raking Football Team. It's phenomenal, the season that they're having. I hope that the weather cooperates, but it seems like it doesn't matter whether it does or not. They're, they're still plowing through teams left and right, which is just absolutely terrific. I also wanted to mention briefly that my anniversary is sort of like tonight. I started four years ago, first meeting in November of 2009. I think my date was the second, the actual number date, and so it's kind of crazy how, how fast time flies. So, I just wanted to kind of say thank you to the, this city council. This is really the only city council that, that I've really gotten to know. When I started, there were a couple of different members, and then things changed, and I've been with this group ever since. And so, you know, thank you for your, you know, confidence and support in having me. And I'm certainly looking forward to another long haul, so. That was it.
Happy birthday.
Happy anniversary.
All right. Can I get back to the good of the order? Sorry, I got off track a little bit there.
Can I make one comment about this whole, that issue?
Yes.
That logo, logo aside, I know I'm a union member, and the rank and file doesn't vote on endorsements. We always endorse candidates, and we have a, a segment of the union, the Legislative Council, that makes that choice. If somebody in my union were to stroke on their own and throw out a, throw out an endorsement without going through those channels, I would, it would not be my employer that would be the one to issue the repercussions. It would be the union itself. And if it was just the president doing that, they would lose their seat. So, I'm not sure who voted on this, if they voted, or how that worked. As for the logo, when you, when you put together your, you know, I, it's unfortunate that that was used. I'm glad that, that it's been made clear to not use that anymore. But by the same token, when we put our union as, I, I teach at Pine River, so it's Pine River Education Association, and part of our logo is part of our school logo. So, if this is the first time that the city logo has been used with any kind of correspondence from this union, then indeed there is a problem. But if this has been, if they've used this in tandem with their union in other things, that would be something that I would appreciate you looking into before heads roll, so to speak. You know what I'm saying? Because, like I say, Pine River, part of Pine River logo is part of our union logo.
Do they put that in political ads?
When, yes, actually, we have. We have endorsing certain things. Yes, we have.
But that logo would be agreed upon by the union. That's part of Pine River and part of the union. This was completely the city logo.
Well, that's why I asked if they had, if they, if they had had other correspondence from the union using that kind of thing. I think that would make it different than if it's just thrown up there for the purpose of a, of an ad.
I do recall...
Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah. Historically, in the past, they've never had a logo. They've had other endorsements, and this apparently was off course from that. I'm going to go to Councilmember Bowman and just come around for the actual good of the order. Hopefully, you've got some items for us tonight.
Yes, she does. Oh, these will wait for goal-setting section, but that's the one thing that I did want to bring up, is notice that the next goal-setting session is scheduled for December 16th, and I won't be able to be here that meeting. And I missed the first one, so I will ask you to reconsider that date. However, if you can't, I certainly understand that as well, but, and I can just, you know, put some things in writing or something. I don't know what the timeframe is or the timeline for that, but maybe it can be put off or rescheduled earlier. And then the only other thing that I have to say is I'd like to wish all of the candidates who are on the ballot well wishes. In order to put yourself on the ballot, you have to put yourself out there, and you're doing that because you're dedicated to making a difference and doing something for your community. And I think, in that regard, we're all winners, so good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers shippers. Thanks for waiting.
Sure, thank you. What did I want to say? A couple of things, pretty much what Councilmember Bowman said, that I, there was a debate a week ago, and I just really enjoyed that. I enjoyed the civility of that debate, and I enjoyed the fact that it was put on by concerned veterans. And that led me to remind everybody that next week, next Monday, is Veterans Day. And I know my kids at school are getting really excited about, we always do a big program for the veterans, and they're getting pretty excited about that. And so, I just want to thank all the veterans in our community for your service, and, and happy Veterans Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Melma.
First of all, before I say something, I want to qualify my, my age, sixty-seven. And I know I'm old-school, so some of you can point fingers and say, you know, we just don't do things that way anymore. And I understand that. Two years ago, I was sitting here, and I was so upset about the last election, two years ago, because there weren't any issues. And so, I said, let's do issues and solutions over coffee. Let's find out what people are thinking. Let's deal with our issues. I want to tell you, I failed. I failed.
I failed. We have the same situation today that we had two years ago. Two years ago, we threw trans-green under the bus repercussions from Lansing. Nobody checked anything. Somebody just threw that out, had no idea. It was in a speak-out. Another speak-out in this election was that we lost our grant writer. Well, I'll tell you what, we didn't lose our grant writer, our grant writer's still here. They said we lost, we did $250,000 worth of grants. Well, I'll tell you right now, we've done $491,000 today. So somehow, people think that they can throw things out, and what sticks, sticks, and there's no basis for it. And when I bring that issue up, people say, "Oh, that's politics." It does not have to be that way. It does not have to be that way. How can you have solutions? How can you deal with things when you don't even know what you're dealing with, and people are making things up? It just, it, it's enough to, a person my age, you know, go to Florida. You know? Why try, if you're going to do that? Why try? And it's, it's very upsetting. And I was upset two years ago, I'm upset now. Do I think the issues and solutions over coffee has been a good thing? Yes, it's been excellent. It's, it's, only once did I hear one issue out of two years that came up, that was raised in the political campaign, and that was a deposition. And that was at one restaurant. Otherwise, not one issue that was raised has come up in two years on issues over coffee. Not one. You know, in 2008, 2009, we had the worst recession that this country has ever seen. Michigan was on its back. We didn't lose one industry because of the proactive approach of this city. We were down to 1,500 employees, we're up to 23. We had record-breaking on IFTs, and people say, "You don't support industries, you're driving them away." Man, you know, where do people come up with this stuff? I will get off my soapbox, I'm sorry. But please vote tomorrow, and on a positive note, November 12th, we're going to visit KAMA, our Manufacturers Association is going to visit REMCO, and it's in Haringtown Township, and it's under new ownership, and they're doing very, very, very well. And so, that's a real positive thing, and I'm looking forward to that on November 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melma. Well, I should, I would start out by, please, we've thanked you so many times for your issues and solutions over coffee. I know you're putting it on your shoulders of failing at it, but it's been a great process, and, and it's opened up a great opportunity. And I, and I agree with you, the, it's been hard, because we want to stay out of these things, but then when they attack our staff and our council, it's hard. It's, it's difficult, because when they try to do this, it really throws it out. What I've learned through the last month is that we can credit our staff in a lot of areas. One of them's the grant writing, because when you hear this, you check yourself. You see some false thing go out, and you think, "I'm going to fact-find this." And we find out that the grants are still going on, and that there has been some phenomenal work by our staff writing those grants these years. And every year is a case-by-case basis. So, one thing I've learned is, it's given me some appreciation over the last month during this, of giving some credit to the staff that we may not have noticed. It also gave some appreciation to the team effort with the industries and the manufacturers, because I probably take that a little more personal than I should, but when somebody tries to say, "Nobody wants to work with Cadillac," and then we're having record-breaking times, and it's not just, the difference, too, is it's not just replacing equipment that they've already used, a lot of this is, is adding on. Because these, these board of directors are coming to Cadillac, and they're, they're meeting, and I don't know, you guys have probably seen the same trend, a board of directors from a company comes from all over the world, they come to Cadillac, they come here, and then all of a sudden, a year later, we start seeing an announcement because they're doing an expansion. They've come to Cadillac, they love our community, and they make a business decision, as you've said, to do business here. And then we have a major developer begging, begging to work with the city of Cadillac. So, I get, I get a little protective of our council, our staff, our industrial community, but then I always remember that, that the citizens are usually smart enough to realize that, when they see it. When you see the growth, it's hard to, to do that. But I guess, overall, I wanted to just say, you know, this, the staff, I, after this, I want to do a few thank-yous to them. And also, speaking of fact-finding, and not to get in this prior, because a little of my disappointment in that letter is to, to find out how much of that is factual of that one individual's endorsement, to see if there's things that really, if that's really factual, because they've never expressed those concerns to the council, and definitely not to the, the staff. And I, I think that that, the reasoning in itself was disturbing to me. This Saturday at 10:00 AM, I, I want to make this known to the public, I don't even think the staff has got this yet, I would, I would hope that the staff would get this, but we have 10:00 AM in the city park at the fountain to recognize one of our officers, Bill Knitz, that, that passed away while on duty. And that is going to be a ceremony in our city park at 10:00 AM. It's been a long time, some of us were there at the first one with Chris Egley when his name was put on, and I just think it's something that we should pass on to make sure the, the council and the staff know about that 10:00 AM at our city park, the beautiful fountain. But a, a somber moment, but to recognize one of our own, and the family of Cadillac, and so to recognize Bill Knitz as well. So, if people hear this, if they want to make sure they realize that on Saturday, and again, is funny, I was going to mention the same thing about Veterans Day, that, to recognize the veterans, and hopefully tomorrow, people can remember to go vote, because if, without all of the veterans and what they've done, we wouldn't have that right. And I should say, privilege and an honor and an opportunity. Thank you.
And obligation.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens, I believe also we're going to be recognizing some of our other officers in the area on that memorial. Is that correct, Marcus?
That is correct.
And of course, this is the reason this has come to play, is the loss of Officer Knitz, and that is the closest that we have in proximity of time to, to the situation, and that will be a highlight of our, of our ceremony. Okay, I just want to thank council for us and the way we've worked together the last two years, because I think that we have done a good job, and I appreciate that, and the staff working with us well, too. Veterans Day is coming up, so hats off to the veterans and to our community that will celebrate that day coming up on Monday. Finally, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and getting involved, and hopefully everyone will get out to vote tomorrow. And again, I would echo what's been said here tonight, good luck to all the candidates, good luck to the public, get out and have your voice heard, and be a part of our government. We appreciate your input very much up here, although we try to shut you down in the end of our meetings. We recognize there's some questions, and we will get to them. And it's the Monday after, we, we're going to let staff look at this with a level head, and appreciate the comments made tonight, because they are heartfelt, and I look forward to working with you, as long as the public will allow me. And with that, everybody have a great night. Sandy, another good night for you over there at the clerk's seat. And good luck with your first election tomorrow. Everybody get out and vote, and make it fun for Sandy. With that, thanks again for coming and/or watching. Meeting adjourned.